So for those of you who are tuning in on FAG TV, I've just hit record. We missed it at the very start of this meeting. What you've missed is approval from the previous meetings, minutes from the previous meeting, outside the rail of which there are no comments and communications from the mayor. I think we are now set to proceed. Are there any questions for Mayor LaRue? I am seeing none. Thank you, Mayor LaRue.
Yep, you're welcome.
We are on to additions and deletions to the agenda. We have a Public Works Committee report. Can I get a motion to add that under Reports of Standing Committees?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion. It's been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate? I am seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? I am seeing and hearing none, so we are on to reports and letters from department heads and officials. First up, we have Treasurer Markowski, the 2019 IRA Audit Report. This would have been emailed to you Thursday by the clerk. Treasurer Markowski?
My apologies, I didn't get it out sooner. I meant to send it when I sent the city audit report, but I realized that you folks should have a copy of it. Does anyone have questions on the IRA Audit Report? No significant findings in the 2019 report.
I'll move to receiving file.
Second.
I saw it. All right, perfect. So a motion has been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate? I am hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Treasurer Markowski, May 31st, 2020 Treasurer's Report. This would have been emailed to you guys.
Okay, a few things that I want to highlight for May. Cash in city accounts at about $9 million. That's all accounts held by this city. The general fund cash for the end of the period was about $7.3 million, and that included the $3 million that was due to the school in June. And looking at the pooled cash balances, there was $846,000 in the water fund, $67,000 in parking, and sewer and transit funds are both falling a little bit behind with a due to the city of $64,000 from sewer and $82,000 from the transit fund. And I will note, the sewer fund, the reason for the low cash or the negative cash position is really due to the cash expended on some of the projects in the sewer fund. So we should see some reimbursements on those. The delinquent report that I provided, prior year delinquencies are about $1.2 million, and then we add about a $1 million position of delinquent, now classified as delinquent 2020 tax. I went ahead and looked at last year for the same period, and our delinquencies are up about $363,000 for the same period last year. So I think we just need to really watch this, and in my department, need to look at different ways of collection. You know, we can't have public meetings, we can't hold tax sales, so we need to find better ways to reach out to the taxpayers to help. Payment plans, just to see what's happening. We don't want people to ignore the penalties and interest on tax. Delinquent tax just adds up so fast. So we are working with some folks that had some trouble making that fourth quarter payment. And then moving to the balance sheet in the general fund, just to note, we maintained that $2 million, just over $2 million position, which is a little bit below a 10% target that we had for the unassigned fund balance, but I think we're in a good position as we close the year where we have that. And we're going to be looking at the tax rate and really looking at that 10%. Is that going to be high? Can we reduce that a little bit and maybe provide some savings to the taxpayers? So we'll watch that as we close, talk more about that tax rate as we get into July and have better numbers for the close of the year. Income and expenses for the period, in total, the general fund is on target at about 91%. Just noted, a couple of departments that are over legislative is really due to abatements that were approved. Streetlights had, Streetlights Department had repair and maintenance, extra repair and maintenance expenses. And then looking at recreation, the CSJ property was never part of the budget, so that's throwing off CSJ and program expenses. Looking at the water and sewer funds, the revenues, we've looked at before, and we know that they're lagging some at 70 and 72%, but we're still waiting on that fourth quarter billing. I know everybody in DPW is working very hard to get that billing ready to go out at the end of the month. Parking fund revenue is about 75% with expenses 90%. I will note that parking enforcement resumed early June, so we're seeing some revenue come in there. Transit fund, we have revenue expenses reported through March, so it was looking good, revenues exceeding expenses by about $21,000. Moving on to the IRA, at the end of May, having a cash balance of $84,000, and the IRA still holds some fund balance assigned for capital projects, business development reserves, and grants, so I think they're in good shape there. A couple of things to note, things that I did want to mention, the mail drop slot, because we didn't know how long this COVID-19 was going to go on. And obviously, I hope that we're open to the public for the next collection, but we don't know that, so I think that's going to be a big help to many of the taxpayers. Really watching the state decision on education rates and when those will be available. The last that I read, I think we'll know July 1, we should have those rates. So we'll see what that does to our tax rate. One item that I'm really watching is our cash flow. We have, it seems like a high cash balance, but we have some significant expenses coming at the end of the month, some bond payments and stuff, so I'll really watch that. I think we should be okay, but if we need to do some interfund borrowing, I'll reach out to the board. We'll talk about it probably early July, if that's necessary. Okay, any questions on the May financials?
Alderman Torey?
Thanks. Mary, have you noticed for the FY '20 delinquencies, are they across the board? Are they more, you know, single-family, multifamily, commercial? Have you noticed that, anything?
I really haven't had time to analyze that, so I couldn't give you a good information on that, Chris, sorry.
Ms. Curse, thanks.
Other questions for Treasurer Markowski? I am seeing and hearing, oh wait, Alder Woman Davis, sorry.
Sorry, thank you. Mary, just quickly, the last time that we talked about the delinquencies, how many were out there for the May payment? Have you seen any of those payments coming in, or are we still at the, probably pretty much the same level we were when payments were due?
We actually have seen quite a few come through after we put the penalty on. We've had some good collections, so I'm pretty optimistic on that. I was surprised, we had some large balances that came in after that last report, so.
Any other questions for Treasurer Markowski?
Yeah, I muted.
Sorry, who are you? All right, I am hearing and seeing no questions from the board for Treasurer Markowski. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
All right, we are moving on to Brennan Duffy, IRA Director for the Downtown Strategic Plan Initiative. This is page one of your packet.
Hi, folks. So I just wanted to give an update on the Downtown Strategic Plan process. We had been, the plan itself is really wrapped up probably a month or so ago, and we were hoping to be able to do an in-person final meeting and kind of present that back to the community and the folks that have been involved. And at this point, I think we've decided that we just can't, can't hold it indefinitely, and it doesn't look like the public meeting ability is going to be coming along anytime soon. So the thought is that we will do a remote meeting on the Zoom platform, and we will be doing that on Tuesday, June 23rd at 5:30. And we would love to have the board involved in that and hear the results of their study and their recommendations for moving forward, and also, obviously, other members of the public that might be interested in this. So I will have some information on the actual login for the Zoom meeting shortly, and I will make sure to forward that on to the board members, and we'll be posting that on the IRA website and the Downtown Rutland Partnership website, I'm sure. So any questions about that?
Any questions for Brennan? I am hearing and seeing none. Thank you, Brennan.
You bet.
All right, so we are on to Attorney Blumer, request proposal, legal research software. This is page two of your agenda. Attorney Blumer?
Thank you. Yeah, so in the effort to reduce expenses going into next year, I was looking into other options for the legal research software that we use here in the office. We currently use Westlaw, and it's a fairly expensive service, a little over $10,000 a year, which gives us access to quite a bit of material, so that we don't have to drive up to Vermont Law School to access the books. But I think that there's opportunities, especially right now, to potentially reduce that expense, so I'm hoping to have the board's permission to go out with an RFP for, you know, the similar service. I imagine Westlaw will, you know, provide an estimate again, but LexisNexis is another big company that also does it, and I'm sure there's a handful of others that are out there. So just, you know, kind of by charter, it would likely be more than $3,000. And I think it would be useful to have an option to do a multi-year contract, so that's kind of what I'm asking for, just permission to go out, and then I'll come back with for you to approve.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
I saw, perfect. So we have a motion to suspend. It's been seconded. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Alder Woman Davis?
So I'll move to authorize the city to go out, request for proposal for legal research software.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion. It's been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate? I am hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Attorney Blumer. Next up, we have Attorney Blumer again, wage increase for non-union PD employees. Pages three and four of your packet.
All right, thanks again. So I was able to provide this in the packet, so hopefully the folks have had a chance to read through the request to ratify the wage increases for the non-union personnel in the police department. So this is something I kind of explained in the background that the police that have gone by, we were trying to determine what the wage increase should be, and our aim to make that decision and get the back pay calculations going, we'd like to get the board's approval. So two of the years are kind of look-back years that we're looking for ratification on, and then going forward, the fiscal year that starts July 1st, the proposal is to give them all 75 cents wage increase. So there is a little bit more information in the memo, but if nobody has any other questions, I'll just leave it at that for now.
Any questions from the board?
Do we have to suspend the rules to take this up tonight? So moved?
Yes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules, and it's been seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Alderman DePoy?
And I would move to authorize the ratification of the FY '19 wage increases for Commander, Sergeant, and Executive Assistants at 3.0%. 2020 for the same at 1.5%. And 2021 for the same at .75. Is that 75 cents?
Yep, yeah, it's a flat rate in the third year versus a percentage.
So moved.
I'll second for debate.
All right, we have a motion, and it's been seconded for debate. Debate discussion, Alder Woman Davis?
So Matt, if you could, is these amounts reflective of the union amounts that were given in those fiscal years?
Yes, in the first two, fiscal year '19, the non-union wage increase for department heads, another 9.03%, same thing in fiscal year '20 was 1.5%. In fiscal year '21, this 75 cents actually tracks the, what the union sworn officers received. So because it's flat, it's actually kind of a different percentage for the commanders, the sergeants, and the executive assistant, because the less you make, the higher percentage that 75 cents is. And so for the commanders, it's a lower percentage than, say, what the executive assistant would receive if you do the math out. But the last line of the memo was, the chief was, if we gave them the 1.5% that the rest of non-union got for fiscal year '21, then they would have gotten less of a raise than everybody else in the department. So the chief was therefore proposing that they get the 75 cents rather than the lower amount, which would have been 1.5.
If I may just follow up, and I don't know if this question for you or the mayor, the total cost and the money to come from what source?
Say that again?
The cost of fiscal year '19, '20, '21 with these changes, and the money to come from existing police budget, where?
Yeah, so fiscal year '19 and '20, those, well, fiscal year '19 is already completed, so that budget has been, you know, kind of accounted for. Fiscal year '20, we're about to, about to end, and I think Chief Kocullen is on the line too, so he probably has a better sense where his salary line is for this year and for next, so he may be able to speak to, you know, just his ability to meet, meet those amounts with the salary that's been, the salary line that's been approved in both of those years. So chief, are you still out there?
Yes, I am. So, right, fiscal year '19 and '20 were not budgeted in the police department. If you remember when we did this last year's, but, sorry, fiscal '21's budget, all three years of raises hit at the same time. So the '19 and '20 increases were not budgeted through the police department. Raises were budgeted in the police department for fiscal '21.
But chief, for fiscal year '20, are you going to be below on your salary line or below overall? I guess it's probably the more important question.
Yes, certainly below on our salary line, and I project to have a surplus in the overall line at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, and then for fiscal year '21, would you plan that you can absorb it with the salary line, either through vacancies or other machinations?
Yes, yes. For fiscal year '20, when we did budget raises for that year, as opposed to the previous two where we didn't.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Alderman Garuso?
Yeah, I just want to be really clear on this. I think Sharon Alderman Davis brought up a really good point. So this money is coming out of already budgeted money, chief, right?
The fiscal '21, yes. Fiscal '19 and '20, again, not budgeted through the police department. When the contract was settled, at least in September of last year, there was some significant retroactive pay. Now, Mary might be able to answer that question better than mayor, whether it was through an unassigned fund balance or some other particular line, or ultimately charged to the surplus that we ended up fiscal '20 with. Maybe Mary can answer that question better, but as I said, the raises weren't budgeted in '19.
Okay, so I got it. So the actual fiscal dollars are coming out of what would be a surplus on the '20 because you can't go back to '19, right?
Um, that's my, and again, fiscal '20, yes. The fiscal '20, we should be able to absorb raises that were not budgeted. Fiscal '19, that year, as I said, came and went before the contract was settled. So as I said, Mary may be able to answer that question better than me.
Well, that's, that's good, so thank you very much. I got you now, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, and the reason that the money wasn't budgeted was we didn't know where it was going to end up, so we didn't know where the contract was going to end up and what the increase was going to be. So we deferred putting money into the '20 budget, and we waited to backfill it in '21 when the, after the contract was signed. So the money's in there.
Alderman DePoy?
Thank you. Brian, can we get, if you don't have it now, either from you or from Mary, what the surplus amount coming out of the police department is likely to be for the '20 budget?
Sure, I can check with Mary tomorrow, work on that, and get that to you.
Okay, and when we're through with this motion, Mr. President, I'd like to make another motion, please.
Is there any further debate or discussion on the current motion we have on the floor? I am hearing and seeing none. So we have a motion, it's been seconded regarding the request as stated in your handout. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Alderman DePoy, you had a second motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to send the issue of the surplus coming out of the police department for the 2020 budget to the Public Safety Committee for further discussion.
Second that.
All right, so we have a motion, it's been seconded, to send the surplus of the 2020 police budget to Public Safety Committee. Is there any discussion or debate on the issue? Alderman Torey?
Thanks, I'm just wondering why, the reason for that? Alderman DePoy?
Yeah, the reason for that is, is I don't know how much it is, first of all, and then discuss when we do get into committee. Hopefully, it's at a point where Mary and Brian can get those numbers a little bit more solidified, so they have them ready for us. That way, we can discuss if we're going to just roll that into a reduction of the tax rate for next year, you know, in July when we do that, or if we want to use that for further, you know, pay reconciliations or anything like that.
All right, so we have a motion, it's been seconded, to refer to Public Safety Committee, the surplus of the 2020 police budget. Is there any further discussion or debate?
I just have a question of the treasurer, as to the timeframe, you will know when that, when the budget is closed, if those are paid from the police department, and when that committee meeting might be able to occur, what surplus is left?
I'm looking at the calendar, I'm thinking that not the first week in July, but maybe that second week in July, but we're in a bit of a crunch because we'll be looking to set that tax rate by the 20th. So we'll need to do that before then. By then, we should have a better projection once we close the fiscal year, because we have to roll back a couple of payrolls that are paid in July, we've got to roll those back to June. So there's quite a bit of work on my end to get those numbers together. So we would want to meet before the 15th, by the 15th, I would say, if we're going to make a, you know, earmarks and money and not make it available for tax relief, that's really important, we'll need to know that sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
Alderman Garuso?
Yes, thank you. I was just looking at who chairs Public Safety. It's Sharon Alderman Davis. What I'd like, I'd like to be notified of the meeting, and the other question that comes out of this, I think, is tonight we approved 3%, 1.5%, .75%, or .75 cents. I'd like to know in real dollars what that is. Did 3% equal $1,000, or, you know, did 3% equal $20,000? I'd really like to see the numbers. If that's not hard for the treasurer or whatever to come up with, I'd like to know what we just did in real dollars. How much money did items one, two, and three cost us? If that's okay with you guys, I just would like to see how much money that is, and because it doesn't sound like much, 3%, 1.5%, it could be thousands. Is that fair game for your meeting?
I think we could do that for the meeting. I just want to clarify, the 2019, we were able to, because that retro was done, we were able to roll that back at the 2019 expense, except everything appropriately in 2020, even though we hadn't budgeted in 2020, it's being offset by some, it's being offset in that, some savings within that budget. Yes, I think we could come up with some numbers for you, so you could see what it's trending for 1920 and '21.
And I thank you. I'm not after anything, I just wanted to see some real numbers, that's all, no intentions whatsoever, but I thank you if that's possible, that would be, I think, helpful. Thank you.
Alderman DePoy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Alderman Garuso, that's the main reason why I wanted to make that motion, so that we can get those numbers in committee and talk them, talk about them, mull them over, and see exactly where we stand when it comes to the police department budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion, it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion or debate? I am hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Attorney Blumer, Chief Kocullen, and Mary. So that, we are on to Reports of Standing Committees. Alder Woman Ryan, Community and Economic Development. This is pages five through seven of your packet.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The Community and Economic Development Committee meeting met virtually on June 9th, 2020, to discuss the Center Street modification process. Committee members present were myself, Chair, Alderman Sharon Davis, Vice Chair, Alderman Torey, Garuso, and Talbot. Alderman present were President Whitcomb, Alderman Clifford, DePoy, Mattis, Humphrey, and Gillum. Others present were Executive Director of the IRA, Brennan Duffy, Transportation Planner for Regional Planning Commission, Devin Hary, ED of DRP, Steve Peters, Treasurer Markowski, Building and Zoning Admin, Tara Kelly, Rutland City Fire Department Chief, Bill Lovett, DPW Commissioner Wemberg, and Dordon DeShillo from the Rutland Herald. The meeting started at 5:31 PM. Brennan opened the meeting with an overview of the proposed concept for Center Street. This concept would involve temporarily making Center Street one-way and expanding seating and businesses, or expanding. and businesses, or expanded seating for businesses and sidewalks for pedestrians by limiting or narrowing the roadway. Brennan stated that this has been a collaborative planning process that included Rutland, Blooms, Riddick, the Mint, DRP, and the Region Planning Commission. Brennan talked about the different phases that this project would involve, from testing it out to short-term and long-term implementation. Devin took us through the Economic and Pedestrian Response to COVID- nineteen, a pilot program for Center Street Packet. The detailed packet included information about, information about challenges and opportunities, an executive summary, project partners, responsibilities, timeframe, budget, designs, design elements and examples. More specifically, Devin talked about parklets and street seats, creating buffer zones with planters and delineators, crosswalks, curb extensions, and involving the art communities to beautify the street escape. The speed limit would go down to fifteen miles per hour, and bike sharers would be incorporated to encourage the use of slow traffic. Further, Devin said that this project concept is a try before you buy, and that pilot studies are great for this. This project is being looked at as a whole. Alderman Clifford asked Steve if the DRP has talked to all the businesses on Center Street and if they were on board. Steve stated that there have been overwhelmingly positive responses and that there are only a couple of businesses they need to check off with. Alderman Clifford also asked Commissioner Wenberg about the sewer odor and how or if it could be maintained with deodorant blocks. Commissioner Wenberg said that the fire department can maintain the basins and keeping them full would help reduce the odor. The deodorant blocks can help cut the odor, but Commissioner Wenberg said he needs to look into it more. Alderman Davis had some questions and concerns that she brought up. First, as a board, what can we do as soon as possible? Second, what thoughts does the fire department have regarding one-way traffic on Center and the ability to get trucks through? Third, she was nervous about spending eighteen thousand dollars for two months and was curious about what funding source the eighteen thousand would come from. And fourth, can parklets be reused? Brennan was optimistic and said that this project has potential to be up and running before the Fourth of July, and that the timeframe is critical. Brennan spoke with Chief Lovett, ensured him that the trucks would be able to contain one lane. Brennan also stated that many of the structures used for this project can be reused. Alderman Gillum asked who will be responsible for making sure this project happens. Brennan said that the RRA would assume the role as a project leader, but a real collaborative effort from other partners such as downtown DRP, City Fire and Police, and the Rect Department would be needed. Alderman Torey was appreciative of Devin's hard work and wanted to make sure there was an opportunity to support restaurants and business owners who are not on Center Street but located downtown. Alderman Torey said that was, that now was the time for the board to get involved and help with marketing on the Center Street project. He said that this, that the best case scenario is we get back from me, and the worst case scenario is that we tried something new and brought excitement to the downtown. Alderman Mattis asked what the plan was for the summer and if there was a difference between temporary and permanency for structure and cost. Brennan responded that we would prove a concept and see how it works, if this is successful and the stakeholders want to see this pursued, we'd look at how we will fund it. For long-term planning, we would need to find significant funding, roughly around a million dollars through grants and transportation for things like moving sidewalks, etc. And added that this pilot study will go into a formalized report that would benefit the future grant funding, and therefore, we would be looked at as a valuable candidate for bigger spending sources. Brennan stated that, that for the pilot study, we might want to have a reasonable, quote, "not exceed" number, and it might benefit to bump up the project from eighteen thousand to twenty thousand to include funding for places that are not on Center Street. He also said the buy-up might be the appropriate funding source at this time, in addition to looking at all efficiencies and grants that are available this summer that can be used to leverage some of the project money. Alderman Davis made a motion to approve the Economic and Pedestrian Pilot Program for Center Street and any other business in the downtown area that wishes to seek assistance under this program, and to fund the program with an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. The motion was seconded by Alderman Garuso, motion passed, five zero, my so moved.
Thank you, Alderwoman Ryan. Alderwoman Mattis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, I just have a question about the specific language of the motion. I know that during committee, we had talked about eighteen thousand dollars funding the Center Street project, and then adding a little buffer of two thousand dollars to include businesses that didn't happen to be located on Center Street, but the way the motion is worded is that it's available to anyone who might want it, and that seems, that seems over, over what we mean, because really, it is a Center Street project, and we do want to make funds available to other businesses as possible, but it doesn't seem right to make it available to anyone who might want it, because we don't have a way of making those decisions. You understand my concern?
Speaking to me, Rebecca?
Uh, I guess I'm speaking to the maker of the motion, yes.
Well, and the motion was also amended, if I may, and so I had tried to include that in what we were talking about with the other businesses, but Sharon, sorry, go ahead.
Well, no, I just, I agree with what Lisa's saying, and I think Rebecca, and I think Brennan's still on, I think there was discussion, that I recall at least, that, yes, it's a Center Street project, but how do we assist the businesses on Merchants Row, how do we assist the ones on West Street, and not just closing it to Center Street, so I, that was my understanding of a additional funds and the amendment to the motion.
If I may, I guess, my concern is that it just seems, the language seems too, too general, I guess, to me, the motion would make more sense to say, including any other businesses that might want it a, as possible, this, maybe I'm being too, too persnickety or too fearful or something, it just, since the funds are limited, it clearly won't be available to anyone who wants it. It just seems like it should be, we're funding the Center Street project and, and additional funds to benefit other merchants as possible.
Yes, if I can help Alderman Mattis, some of the other members, so, I was pretty grumpy in the beginning on this, because I, I didn't have the documents, and then when I found out I could access them here on my phone, I said during the meeting, which didn't make the minutes, this is a fantastic idea, having been in downtown Rutland for many years, I worked downtown, this is probably, as a pilot program, one of the best ideas I've seen for Rutland, and we did mention in the meeting, or at least why I supported that motion, was if other businesses wanted to come in, because there would, there would be space, but basically, what this says is little decks and little parking spots and trees and buffers, and it's only for a couple of months, but for twenty grand, it was actually eighteen when we were talking about, this is an awful lot to do for Center Street for such a small amount of money, and it's a pilot program, and we did say that if other businesses wanted to come in and get in, but I don't think we can do Whale Street and Merchants Row and all that, certainly for twenty grand, but I thought it was the best effort I've seen in, in all the years I've been in Rutland for Center Street, it gives us, we eat our cake and have it too, we're going to allow traffic to go through, we're still going to have parking spaces, we're going to have outdoor dining, we're going to have trees and shrubs and plants, and I think it's a wonderful idea, in my opinion, and like I said, we'll deal with other businesses if they want to complain about it, but what a great thing to get started, and that's why I supported the motion, and I hope I answered your question.
Sorry, go ahead, Brennan.
That's okay, I just wanted to add to that, that I think, I think when we proposed the budget, we were talking specifically about the Center Street modifications, and I do just want to clarify for the record that what we're talking about in the most recent concept is actually not a one-way traffic pattern, but it will be a two-way traffic as it exists today, with a modification to limit the road width, so, I just, for the reporting, I want to make sure that that goes out clearly, that this is not a one-way, that was one early concept that we considered, but what we're actually talking about now is maintaining the two-way traffic and the parking on both sides of that street, limiting the width, which will allow us to expand the outdoor pedestrian space and seating for restaurants, so just to clarify that. And back to the question, I guess, about how that motion came about to include other potential businesses that might want to avail themselves, what we were talking about at that point was what if there was a business, a restaurant, or a bar that wanted to have an outdoor seating space but wasn't on Center Street, and how could we accommodate them and make that happen in a quick way where we weren't coming back and waiting for the, the schedules of public meetings, and so I think that's where the additional two thousand dollars was added, and I think it makes sense, at least to me, that we would keep that amount currently there, if that's approved, and be able to work one-on-one with businesses that are in other parts of the downtown, not specific to Center Street. If that makes sense to you, Alderman Mattis.
Uh, thanks, my concern was, sorry, if I may, my concern was not what we meant by the motion, at all. I supported the motion, I'm not at all confused about how the motion was made and amended. My question is with the wording of the motion, and my concern is, what if ten businesses that are not located on Center Street wish to participate, and we lack the funding for that? I just, I just want to be very particular with the language of the motion, that we're not promising more than we can budget, so that was my only question, is, is the language of the motion responsible to our limited budget? Are we promising something that we can't deliver on in terms of a twenty thousand dollar budget? I just was perhaps proposing an amendment that says "as possible" at the very end of the motion that was made, just to be clear that it's for Center Street plus other merchants as possible, and I guess I'll propose that amendment, I'll make a motion for that.
I'll second that.
Alright, so we have the original motion as presented in the report out, and Alderwoman Mattis has offered an amendment to state "as possible." Do I have that correct, Alderwoman Mattis?
Yes, thank you.
Alderwoman Davis.
I'm going to vote against the amendment, and the reason I am is I think we have, we have a, we have a dollar amount there that says not to exceed, so, go over the dollar amount anyways. I'm just afraid if we add the language "as possible," then we discourage anybody who's not on Center Street for even approaching the opportunity to see whether a restaurant on West Street or on Merchants Row could benefit from this, so, I think the program is going to be overseen by the RRA, Brennan is well aware of the discussions that we've had within the committee process, we have a limited dollar amount that's capped at twenty thousand, and I think the motion is clear.
Alderwoman Ryan.
I actually agree with Alderman Davis, and also would have voted against the motion, in that, I don't think that, you know, it's saying, here's eighteen thousand for Center and two thousand for places off Center, I'm looking at it holistically, there's twenty thousand dollars, yes, the majority is for Center, but, you know, Calvin's might want to get in on it, maybe Strangefell's, and we need to be aware of that and have that extended two thousand, so, I don't know if it's semantics or not, if I need to, you know, withdraw my motion, then I guess we'll figure it out, but I don't have any language, and I don't also.
Thank you, so if there's no further discussion or debate, all we're voting on right now is the amendment to the motion, which would add "as possible" to the end of what's originally presented. Alderwoman Mattis.
If people aren't concerned about the semantics, I don't, I don't need to get overly into the weeds about it, I just wanted to be sure that we were clear and that the city was clear, so, you know, if, I don't mind withdrawing my motion, I'll withdraw my motion.
Alright, so, the amendment to the motion has been withdrawn, which returns us to the original motion, which is in your packet and as read by Alderwoman Ryan. Is there, could I ask quickly, who seconded that motion, the original motion? Thank you, Alderwoman Davis. Is there any further discussion or debate on, yeah, original motion? I am hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone. We are now on to the Public Works Report, Alderman Clifford, and this would have been emailed to you earlier in the day.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, forgive me for not addressing you, my other screen is over here. DPW Committee met virtually on the third of June, I called the meeting to order at five thirty. The committee members present were myself, Vice Chair Alderwoman Mattis, Alderman DePoy, Alderwoman Humphrey, Alderman Gillum, other, Alderman present were President Whitcomb, Alderman Davis, Alderman Talbot, Alderman Torey, and Alderman Garuso. Also present were Commissioner Wenberg and City Engineer Jim Rotundo, John Russell the Third, Patty Johnson, Mark Walinsky, Rick Moore, Scott Taggart, Attorney Blumer and Mike Smith of Weston and Sampson Engineering. I opened the meeting by explaining that the agenda would cover the consecutive water systems operations and management agreements with Heritage Hill, the Gables, and the Meadows, and an update on the wastewater bond projects. Commissioner Wenberg introduced John Russell the Third as the representative of the Gables and the Meadows, Patty Johnson, Mark Walinsky, and Rick Moore representing Heritage Hill. Mr. Wenberg explained that the relationship between the city water system, which provides the water, and the consecutives, which then distribute the water to their customers. Under state law, the consecutives are independently regulated as public water systems, however, they can become exempt from those regulatory requirements if the whole system, the city, has operation control of the consecutives. This is our longstanding relationship with the Rutland Town, and more recently, the Housing Authority for their water main on Juneberry Lane, which is a private road. The agreements are all modeled after a, after the Rutland Town Agreement and have been approved by the city attorney. Under the DPW, under the contract, the DPW would manage and maintain their systems the same as ours, except we would build the consecutive systems for any work performed, and the cost would be covered by their customers, and not ours. The Department of Environmental Conservation has been encouraging the city and the three consecutives to enter into these agreements for some time. The DPW has been working with them and conducted some investigations to determine if our customers would be at any increased regulatory risk if we did this. Mr. Wenberg stated that they have concluded that entering into these agreements and assuming this role does not place our system at any greater risk than if we don't. John Russell the Third explained that his company installed most of the systems, and they know a lot about constructing the water systems but are not system operators, and he thinks the agreement will lower the risk for both his and the city's system. Alderman Garuso asked if this included Gleason Road, the Gleason Road water main, and Mr. Wenberg said that the main was owned by Rutland Town, and that all three of these systems are located within the developments past the connections to the main. I asked the city, if the city had metered the water, water use, and Mr. Wenberg confirmed that all of the buildings in all three developments are metered and by the city and built accordingly. There was some discussion to better understand the consecutive water systems, Alderwoman Mattis asked if there were any other examples of these systems in the state, Mr. Wenberg said that Stonegate was a consecutive, but said that the city would probably not recommend an O and M agreement due to the fact that, unlike the other three under consideration here, it was not built to city standards. Commissioner Wenberg stated that Heritage Hill, the Gables, and the Meadows had had difficulty. had had difficulty complying with the disinfection byproducts rule over the years. And at least one of them is out of compliance right now. The city resolved our compliance issues years ago and has been in compliance since May of 2012. If these systems become exempt, the city's testing will apply to them. So in response to a question from Alderman Madison, Mr. Wendberg said that the city has already proposed some improvements to their system that should help the situation. It will most likely continue testing inside the development for a while to confirm that the issue is resolved. Alderman Gillum moved to recommend to the full board to authorize the mayor to sign the operation and maintenance contracts with the three consecutives and the department to submit the contracts and applications for the exemption to the state. And I still move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion. It's been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate on this? I am hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. I, the others. And Mr. Wendberg, I asked Mr. Wendberg to begin the briefing on the wastewater bonds. Mr. Wendberg said that Mike Smith from Weston and Sampson would brief the board on the Forest Main and Digestor projects, and Engineer Rotundo will brief the committee on the Northwest Neighborhood Project. Mr. Smith explained that the Forest Main project was awarded to the Belden Company. This, the project involves drilling a hole for the pipe laterally underground from near the treatment plant to near the pump station at River Street. He explained that several efforts to get the drill through the subsurface soils had failed, and one more attempt would be made using a slightly different approach. If it works, the project could still be completed for about $1.3 million. The project has had many delays, including the lawsuit challenging the vote and the late discovery of mildly contaminated soils at the Green Mountain Power Site through which the drilling is being attempted. He also stated that the additional investigations required by the state will require a contract amendment for Weston and Sampson, which will be forthcoming. Regarding the Digestor Rehab Project, Mr. Smith said the low bidder came in at $3.08 million, a bit over the estimate of $2.9 million. He explained that the contractor, Naylor and Green, has had difficulty getting firm delivery dates for critical fabricated steel structures due to COVID-19 disruptions. The contractor is preparing an estimate of the additional, the cost to do the winter construction so the city can determine if we want to try to construct this fall and winter or wait until spring. And Mr. Wendberg explained that there were costs and risks associated with additional delays. So the information will be critical in making this decision. Let me see here. The briefing was then turned over to City Engineer Rotundo, who explained that the Belden Company had just started the construction in the six-block area around the middle. He explained that the project was a continuation of the Northwest Neighborhood Project completed a few years back, just to the west of this area. The purpose is to install new separate storm sewer system in the neighborhood to relieve stormwater pressure on the treatment plant and reduce the combined sewer overflows. He provided some project statistics and slides and a map of the project area. And it is expected that the work will be completed by the end of December of this year. Mr. Rotundo then showed a table showing the costs and funding of all the projects under the $7.4 million bond approved by voters in March of 2019. The Northwest project came in at $2,845,000, including engineering. The project has been awarded $535,000 in state grants and subsidies, bringing the total to be financed by bonding to about $2,309,000. This is still below the $2,396,000 authorized bond article. He further explained that including all of the projects, the expected cost is a little over $6.1 million, well within the $7.4 approved by the voters. Alderman Grosso asked where the separated stormwater would go. Mr. Rotundo explained that the new system will interconnect with the one in town a few years ago. It will flow through those pipes and be treated in the swirl separators just before discharging into East Creek at Water Street, Park Avenue, and Center Street. Alderman Torrey asked about the grant funding for the projects. As shown on the table, Mr. Rotundo explained that some of the projects are over budget, but the state has changed their funding requirements, allowing us to use their grants and subsidies to cover the cost overruns as the project proceeding. This allows communities to avoid having to reduce the scope of projects and get the promised work done. Alderman Davis asked Mr. Rotundo to email the spreadsheet out to the board members for review. Mr. Rotundo said he would be doing so following the meeting. There were no good business. Alderwoman Madison moved to adjourn and passed with no objection. The meeting was adjourned at 6:42 PM. Thank you. Everybody still waiting?
Any questions for Alderman Clifford?
I am hearing and seeing, thank you very much Paul.
Thank you.
We are on to reports of select committees. We have none. Reports of representatives, none. petitions, letters, and miscellaneous communications. We have GMP pole and wire requests on Church Street. This is pages eight through 10 of your packet.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Tom DeBois seconded. We have a motion that's been seconded. Suspend the rules. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Alderwoman Davis?
And I'll move to approve the GMP pole and wire request for Church Street with the seven standard conditions.
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Alderwoman Humphrey, you are going to recuse yourself. All right, so knowing that, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We are on to Board of Control Commissioners, of which we have nothing. Unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the board?
To adopt the master plan. Clerk Heck has pointed out that we need to adopt the master plan. So we need a motion to untable.
I'll move.
Remove from the table.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to, it's been seconded, to untable. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Move that the Board of Alderman authorize the mayor, I believe it is, to adopt the master plan. Is that proper?
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded to authorize the adoption of the master plan. Is there any debate or discussion on this issue? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other unfinished business to come before the board? I am hearing and seeing none. So we are on to miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. Alderwoman Humphrey?
Thank you. So was this summer looking a little bit different than it has in the past? And a lot of folks not being able to travel as much as they'd like, to go on vacation as much as they'd like. The topic of outdoor fire and fireplaces and fire pitches come up quite a bit in my conversations in my social circles. And so what, I would like to move to refer the review of outdoor fires to the Public Safety Committee. I think ultimately that would probably end up in charter and ordinance. But I'd like to start in Public Safety to review this with our fire department. So it may be an opportunity to reconsider, or it may just be an opportunity for the fire department to remind us why this is not a good idea. But it's something folks are talking about, so I'd like to bring it up.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion that's been seconded to refer the issue of outdoor fireplaces to Public Safety Committee. Is there any further discussion or debate? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. So we're still on to miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. Alderwoman Ryan?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to refer to the HR Committee the information that was provided by the trainers from the anti-bias training to look at how that information and those lessons can be applied to policies within City Hall.
Alderwoman Humphrey, you're seconding? Okay. All right, so we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate on this issue? I am hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of referring to Human Resources Committee, the lessons from implicit bias training, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Is there any other miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business to come before the board?
No.
Alderman Grosso?
Yeah, just a quick thing, and I just checked my sheet to see that I believe Alderwoman Madison is the representative to the Solid Waste District. I've been going to the transfer station for 30 years. I'm a big recycler. I go up and sort all my stuff every week. And I've never had this asked before, but they asked about a permit and made me buy a permit. And they also make me pay for my trash. And I'm just wondering, are we also giving them city money? Because I mean, that's kind of crazy. If we're giving them taxpayer money and then we go up. I always thought like that kind of thing applied to people from out of town that would use the transfer station, and the city people weren't, what do you call it? Weren't subject to it because there were city voters and the city gave money to the Solid Waste District. So I'm just curious. I don't know who would, maybe the treasurer would know. But if we're giving them money and then they're charging for permits, and then on top of that, charging $4 a bag up from three. Just curious about that. That's all. I don't know. I was wondering if they're getting city money or not. So someone could check it out and just let us know.
Alderman Gillum, I see your hand.
I'm also a representative for the mayor's office on the same board. We have just passed a whole fee structure before the budget went into place. We've always had permits. We've always charged, but never enforced. So now they're enforcing it because the state of Vermont is requesting us to do that. So everybody has to have a permit. Everybody has to pay as they go. And there is fees for members, which the city is a member of the Solid Waste District. And then there's higher fees for folks who are not members, the towns who are not members of the district. They can use it, but at a higher fee.
So the question is, are, at budget time or on the ballot or whatever, are they getting city money in addition to charging fees and memberships?
No.
They're not. Beautiful. That's all I need to know. Thank you.
It's a self-contained municipality that runs the solid waste program for the county.
Good. Excellent. Well, I encourage people to recycle and go there. It's a great operation. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Grosso and Alderman Gillum. Is there any other miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business to come before the board?
I'll move to.
Go ahead, Drew. I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion adjourned. It's been seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Have a great night, everyone.